Evening. I would like to reconvene the Putnam Valley Board of Education Business Meeting of June 18, 2020. Please stand and join me as we salute our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'd like to first announce that the Treasurer's Report for April 2020 is available in the business office. And we can move right into reports. And Dr. Luft, how do you want, since we're having a little technical difficulty, how do you want to handle the order?
Sure. So I will, I will start and then I'm actually going to turn it over to Dr. Doherty. And then hopefully, Ms. Mastrada, if we figure it out. So I wanted to begin by obviously thanking the community. Our school budget passed 1,382 to 900, and trustee Joe Ferraro was re-elected. So congratulations to them. And again, we're always available for any community member who had any questions or concerns. Even though the budget's over, we're still more than willing to meet with any community member who wanted to go through the development of the budget, how we ended up where we are, and hopefully to better understand the process. So I just wanted to put out that offer to anyone. Maybe the, the one piece that we're still not sure about is we're still waiting to find out what our final state aid number will be. And as anyone who has seen Governor Cuomo's updates on TV, he's pushing for money from the federal government. The federal government is not yet giving that money to the states, so we're still in a wait-and-see cycle with the number of $1.8 million in state aid still being hung out over our heads. So as soon as we have more information regarding what our final state aid numbers are, we'll be sure to share that. Regardless, we wanted to thank the community for their support of our budget. Parents, I know we've been inundated with emails regarding pickup and drop-off opportunities for their schools. We've already done our first round in several buildings regarding dropping off textbooks and picking up locker belongings. I know the elementary school will be doing it next week as well, as well as laptop drop-off. So just for a public service announcement for parents and students to make sure you know when the appropriate day is for you to drop off your materials and pickups, your locker belongings, and be sure to drop off your laptop. That'll be less people we have to contact over the summer and remind them they come in and drop off their laptop. Some very sad news was shared late last week. We were informed by Dr. Mohica that he will be continuing his educational career as a principal in Croton, so we certainly wish him the best of luck. And we already have the position posted on OLS. We will continue to canvas applicants and hopefully find a replacement for our middle school assistant principal that can, I can fill the need that we have there. So again, Dr. Mohica, we wish him the best of luck. We're sorry to see him go. But we will follow the same process we have over the last couple of years regarding the screening of candidates, the committee interview, and we hope to find another very talented assistant principal for our middle school. The senior events have been well underway over the last week. Plus, we had our virtual senior awards ceremony. We had our senior procession, farewell procession parade, where it was one of the worst downpours I've ever witnessed in my life. But turnout was amazing. I think the Putnam Valley Fire Department borrowed trucks from neighboring towns because there were so many fire trucks. I didn't think we owned that many. But it, it was the students hanging out of their parents' sunroofs in the torrential downpour. They were enjoying it. I'm not sure their parents upholstery was enjoying it, but it was a great event. I think we had well over 100 seniors participate, and I think that may have inadvertently became a tradition in Putnam Valley. We had our second whole group meeting of the reentry task force today. So our first meeting, we split up into four different subcommittees. The subcommittees have each met two different times. So this was an opportunity for everyone to get back together and each of the subcommittees to report out. There's a lot of great work going on. Obviously, everyone is anxious for some new guidelines from the state to give us a sense of what direction we're going in, but the work is moving forward at a feverish pace. And there's a lot of great ideas being shared, and that work will continue until, until we have guidance, until we submit a plan to the state, until we have a sense of what next year will look like. I wanted to thank everyone who filled out. We already sent out one survey regarding distance learning to the community that went out both to our faculty, staff, and to our community members. The response rate was very good. And actually, the feedback was very informative and very positive for us. So we're in the stages of preparing a second survey that'll go out to both parents and students that addresses four main topics. First, it's just sort of identifying who they are, what buildings they're in, what grade levels they represent, whether they're a parent or a student. The second questions revolve around social emotional health. How have they handled the situation? What went well? Were there challenges? What we can do to help support them? There's some technology questions regarding access to devices, high-speed internet access, whether or not they applied for one of the, the free subscription that was provided to Optimum, which they could be at risk of losing. And the last category is not, we're not asking for a commitment, but we're asking for parents or students just to sort of give us a pulse check of what their feelings are looking forward to the fall. So specifically about their intentions to send their children or to report to school, if schools were open and complying by the guidelines that we have, or whether or not they would utilize a school bus if they were in fact planning to attend. So again, these are non-binding surveys, but we, it would give us a great little pulse check of the community. Obviously, lots is likely to change between June and August, but we thought it was important to get this information out there to better inform our subcommittees to do the work that needs to be done over the summer to prepare for reentry. Our fourth and eighth grade farewell processions are scheduled for tomorrow. So I believe 10:00 AM is eighth grade, 12:30 is fourth grade. Both will begin at the town park. And again, the Putnam Valley Fire Department will be leading both of those parades through their respective campuses. And on that note, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Doherty. He's going to speak a little bit about our ESY program for the summer.
So two weeks ago tomorrow, two weeks ago, the governor on a Friday night at 5 o'clock or 6 o'clock came out after saying that the extended school year, which is a summer program for students with disabilities, was going to be online, came out and said, nope, it can be in person. It may be in person. So that Friday night was a lot of scrambling among assistant superintendents in, in my field, trying to figure out what that meant, what that could look like, and all of the possibilities. So we waited for guidance from the New York State Education Department. We still have not gotten guidance from the State Education Department. We did receive guidance from the Department of Health. It is a fairly restrictive guidelines in terms of social distancing, in terms of the way desks have to be facing and apart, being able to, students having to eat and basically spend most of their time at their own desks and using their own supplies and just a whole host of, you know, bathrooming guidelines and things like that. So after a lot of conversations with our families and a lot of conversations with our faculty, we decided to hold online classwork, classes, do all of our work the way we're doing it now virtually. However, but to do related services in person as long as parents felt comfortable sending their child in for occupational therapy, physical therapy, and speech. We thought that was at least a nice balance. It's, those are the three areas where we have certainly, it's much more difficult, obviously, to do physical therapy, you know, virtually. So we thought that was a nice balance. And have, today we did a walkthrough at the elementary school. We've picked one wing at the elementary school where, and developed pretty, pretty tight procedures on entrance, exit, cleaning procedures, what supplies were going to be used, identified rooms, all of those important things. I think most parents are really excited about bringing their children in or sending them on the bus. But the, we felt that it was just too much of a, there were too many hurdles to overcome to have full-day classes or even half-day classes for some of our students who really experience difficulty with, you know, keeping, understanding social distance, understanding a lot of the, what's going to be required. So we felt that this was our best option. And I think parents are on board and, you know, some are obviously disappointed. We all want to be back in school. But considering all of the regulations, I think that this is also going to give us some nice information about how things could potentially work as we, we hope, we hope to open schools in the fall. So that's sort of where we are with extended school year. BOCs in the region, all over the region, have, doing only online services. None of them are opening. And we also felt that was another issue, the equity issues involved with some students not receiving any services in person and some receiving only online. So we felt this was a nice balance.
Natalie, what kind of numbers are we talking about? How many students are involved?
In person or the entire summer program is 43?
Yeah, overall.
Forty-three. Forty-three in our district. I'm not including our BOCs students. There's about 18, I think there's about 18, 18 kids in BOCs programs.
So when the announcement was made, or I mean, our initial reaction was like, yes, we're going to make this happen. It's going to be great for the kids. It'll be great for the teachers. It'll be a great transition back to school. And then as the guidelines came out and we really went through and we came to the realization of what the day would look like for these students in order to comply by the guidelines, it wasn't going to look anything like the day that these students are used to having in their ESY program. And that's ultimately what led to the decision to continue through the virtual route while providing them in-person related services, just because it was, it was essentially impossible to have a meaningful educational program and comply by all of the guidelines that were shared with us for the state.
I mean, traditionally, isn't the ESY program over the summer the very much interactive and group-oriented?
It's, it's so interactive and there's so many trips and, you know, really outdoor activities in terms of sharing equipment. A lot of our students require sensory input and, you know, the swings and things like that, like the therapeutic swings and the therapeutic materials in order to address a lot of their needs. So between all of those needs and really just weighing it out, like whether it was going to be easier for us to have work with their, that, with the students and their families on providing, allowing them to do more of those activities sort of designed to meet their needs, or just being really restricted at a desk, only working on certain academic things. And we just felt it was the right thing to do. It was just too restrictive. And I have to say, really, when I've spoken with all the parents, in, you know, some of these parents, they have really expressed how grateful they are for the teachers and all of the engaged activities that they've been involved with and the face-to-face. We've done a lot of individualized instruction. I know it's online, but it is a lot of individualized instruction and small group work, which is great.
Thank you.
Very proud of our faculty and our TAs have really been amazing with our students and engaging with them and their families.
Ms. Mastrada, you want to give it a shot? Yep, we can't hear you. I would just hang up and use your phone. Give up on the computer. All right. So while we try to get for Jeanette Beck, who's having audio difficulties. I did, we did receive two questions from the community. So I'm going to summarize. They both sort of, they covered the same topic, although from two different angles. They really, they speak to the current movement regarding the eradication of racism and, and social justice for all. And I mean, I'll, I'll speak personally. I mean, this is maybe the most profound part of Dr. Will's, or now Regent Will's legacy in Putnam Valley was starting this work. And I know that there's been a wide range of speakers and professional development opportunities and curriculum alignment work that's going on over the past couple of years. And I certainly have every intention to not only continue that work, but to expand it. And obviously, the current movement is only adding fuel to, to that need within our community and within our schools. So work around racism and, and social injustice is one of our summer curriculum priorities for teachers to work on, sort of developing activities that'll be done throughout the year. We have teachers that are teaching in-service courses using resources like Facing History and other opportunities where you sort of identify your own bias. And obviously, all this work's being done in an age-appropriate way. It's being used. Appropriate resources and research-based tools are being used to perform this work. And it is very powerful and very important and certainly work that we plan to continue. And I don't know if anyone else wants to jump in?
Sure. I'll jump in. So before all, you know, George Floyd's death and this whole incident that created this movement, Dr. Mohica and I and Dr. Luft, we really were starting these conversations about doing really even a deeper level of work around this, the topic of race, racism, equity. So we had already reached out to some, some professional development opportunities, people and consultants that could help us, help really guide the work that we need to do as administrators and also that, for the work that teachers need to do. So we've already, we were, we're already in contact with several people on sort of beginning this work. So it just pushed it even further. And I think we do need to, you know, to really focus and make this a priority and do better and to make sure that we, our teachers are prepared to have these deep conversations that, you know, are difficult. And, you know, and certainly, we know school is going to look different next year and making sure that just because school's going to look different, that we, that we make this a priority, no matter whether we're online, in school, or, or doing a hybrid combination, making sure that this work is done and, and moving forward. So absolutely, I think that, that it has to be a priority for our district, for sure.
So as I mentioned before, the full questions and comments that were made were shared with the whole board. So everyone has an opportunity to, to read through the whole document. I just provided a quick little summary as to what the topic of the questions were, but there's certainly much more detail included within the email itself.
Jeremy and Natalie, obviously, you know, we're starting, you know, with small and, and small steps with the summer. And not everybody is going to have been able to avail themselves of staff development all at once. It's going to take a couple of years probably for everybody to get really fully trained because it's a very complicated issue in terms of language and perception. And it, can we look at maybe starting equity committees, equity plans in the building with the goal of developing a district-wide resource for teachers? Here's language that's appropriate that you can use. Here's language you should avoid. These are good websites. These are good, you know, those kinds of things.
Exactly what we're doing. That's exactly what we started to do. And we started, we formed a committee. Jeanette, you want to jump in?
Yeah, we have, we, we formed a committee. I'm sorry, I had audio issues before. So I'm not sure if I'm repeating what someone else said, but we formed a committee that's actually meeting next week with us and with a consultant to help us navigate this work with our school community. We've also included race, racism bias, social justice and equity as a district summer curriculum priority. And that will build off of the work of this committee. And that is something that we hope to continue on throughout the school years, to continue and to weave truly through every content area. We did begin this work. I had taken a culturally responsive framework class in with BOCs. And we were just starting to begin this work at faculty meetings at the elementary school and at the middle school right before the closure, unfortunately. So we didn't get to finish that. But I think the work with our consultants this summer will help us with our committee work, which will lead us into being able to have some of those difficult conversations that can at times be difficult. We're also considering a district-wide text to read. So we're going to talk about that as well. And I think one of the things that we've learned from other tough times in our district is that conversations that are, are difficult for teachers, we don't want to avoid them just because of their difficulty, but we want to be able to help support teachers and help support teachers by giving them, whether it's prompts or praises or just kind of conversation starters to get the conversation going. I think that's what a lot of teachers are looking for. And so that will be part of our work as well.
And, and I, that's great. And I knew you, that work was starting. Zoom, the district that I work in, we've been doing it during remote learning on Zoom. It's interesting that Zoom gives a nice, safe platform. You're speaking face-to-face, but you're also in your own space. So it does help. And a language we're using, because these are very difficult conversations, but we've reframed it. It's called courageous conversations, because it is courageous to admit when you've experienced, when you've experienced white privilege, when you've experienced racism. It's courageous to admit that. It's courageous to admit where you are in it personally. And it's really a person-by-person movement. It's not, I, you, we can make a lot of policy and that helps, but it's one person at a time.
Agreed.
Great job.
Thank you. All right. So now that Ms. Mastrada has audio, we'll, we'll jump in. I know you have a lot of students that you want to recognize.
Yeah, I do. Thank you. I'd like to share some student recognitions tonight. Ms., Dr. Entieri and Mr. Mello did a great job with our senior awards, virtual senior awards presentation last week. But I just wanted to add just a couple of students and, and recognize. I'd like to congratulate our Putnam Valley Seal of Bili literacy recipients. These students were awarded the Seal of Bili literacy for meeting the language proficiency in two languages. Students were required to submit a portfolio, complete an assessment, and a presentation, even though through the closure, the students were able to beautifully present virtually and truly did a fantastic job. Many of our teachers, administrators, staff members, our board members were there. And even Regent Will's joined in on virtual meetings. And I just received an influx of positive feedback from so many. So this year's recipients are Angelica Ordones, Gianna Patino, Sabrina Cross, Emily Mizella, Valeria Luna Mendez, and Bethany Ocampo. I also, congratulations to all of you. I'd also like to congratulate TJ McEwen. TJ is a junior, and he also completed his Seal of Bili literacy presentation in Japanese. So he will be awarded the Seal of Bili literacy upon graduation next year. So we're proud of him as well. And lastly, I just want to thank our Seal of Bili literacy raiders. They really took a lot of time and a lot of commitment to our students, and I really appreciate all the work that they do. And I'd just like to quickly name them. So we have Julia Nelson and Paul Pearson, Jonathan Hogan, Alexis Thornton, Brendan Singer, Leslie Castellano, Leslie Castellanos, Adela Foster, and Kazumi Selby. And I thank them all. They're from all of, all three buildings. And I think that that's really remarkable when all three buildings can come together for something to recognize our, our high school students. I would also like to congratulate our Putnam Northern Westchester BOCs National Technical Honor Society inductees. And they are Nicole Christopherson, Michael Krawiec, Kelsey Shalavon, and Laura Jones. Our district and Dr. Entieri are very proud of these four students. They are the largest group of PB students represented in the honor society. So congratulations to you all. I also have a message from Brian Burrow, our Director of Physical Education, Athletics, and Health. He's very proud. We're very proud of our student athletes of Putnam Valley. And we'd like to celebrate the following students and their commitment to play at the collegiate level. So to the class of 2020, these are our student athletes. Frank Babaco, Matthew Caravone, Joe Kiopi, Dan Clements, Logan Demang, Jason Fowler, Laura Jones, Paul Kessler, Joe Lewis, Jack Longdon, Buddy Pateman, and Kyle Wassel. And we are very proud of you guys. On behalf of your coaches, teachers, and the entire Putnam Valley Central School District staff, we wish you the best. Mr. Burrow would also like me to mention that they're in the process of having a slideshow presented on the website. So it's, it will, it's already on Twitter and Facebook. And, and it's been emailed, but it will also be available on the website as well. And then I just want to, lastly, just echo Dr. Luft's thanks for our parents and teachers who provided feedback in our closure surveys. And we're currently preparing, like he said, another survey focused on the rest of the school, the reopening of our school year. So please keep an eye out for that.
Thank you very much.
And I'm, and I'm going to add Charlie Ross, Charlie Ross, to our list of athletes as well. I apologize for missing Charlie. Congrats, Charlie.
Perfect. Thank you.
Just real quick, can I jump in? I had an opportunity to sit in on the Seal of Bili literacy virtually, and it was tremendous. And it was a great opportunity. And I was very, very proud of the people that participated, as well as all the advisors. So congratulations. That was one of my highlights this year.
It's really impressive work, considering this is only the second year that we've ever done the Seal of Bili literacy. And last school year, we're a single student. So I do want to echo the congratulations to not only the students, but the teachers who have worked very hard. I mean, a lot of those portfolios were put together during the closure period. So there was a lot of individual Zoom meetings and planning sessions between the students and the teachers. So, and for the students to continue moving forward even after the closure period to make sure they got everything done to achieve that recognition. So, thank you.
Yeah. Yes. And I just really want to thank Julia Nelson and Paul Pearson. They put in a lot of time and a lot of effort and truly cared about the students and making sure they were successful. So thank you.
That's great. So are there any other Maureen public comments from the, on agenda items? Okay. So let's move into new business. And we're going to go in our traditional order. So Mr. Ferraro, can I ask you to read number one?
Resolved by the Board of Education to accept the final vote tally for June 9, 2020, budget vote and board election as follows. Proposition 1, budget, yes, 1,382; no, 900. Board of Education, Joseph Ferraro, 1,719. Write-ins, 107.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye. Sorry, it was on me.
That's okay. Number two.
Number two. Resolved on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to appoint Erin Crushank to a four-year probationary term as a special education teacher commencing on September 1, 2020 and terminating on August 31, 2024 in the tenure area of special education at the elementary school on Step 2 MA of the PVFT salary schedule. Ms. Crushank holds students with disabilities grades 1 through 6, initial certification, and childhood education grades 1 through 6, initial certification.
Second. Questions or comments?
Just want to acknowledge that Erin was with us all of last year as a part-time special education teacher. Just want to acknowledge that Erin was with us all of last year as a part-time special education teacher in the elementary school and her performance was very impressive. So she's fulfilling the position that was vacated by another teacher. And we just wanted to sort of extend our congratulations and we're very excited. And we're thankful that she stuck it out in a part-time capacity all of last year and now is able to move forward as a full-time probationary teacher.
I'd also just like to say congratulations to Erin. Prior to last year, she was with us for a year as a Manhattanville apprentice. And we're just very lucky to have her, she's fantastic.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Number three.
Resolved on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to accept the resignation of Santa Orlando, a lunch monitor from the district for the purpose of retirement effective June 30th, 2020 as per document number 181/20 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number four.
Resolved on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to enter into a supplementary memorandum of agreement with the Putnam Valley Federation of Teachers regarding the contractual stipends for the 2020 spring sports season as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic as per document 182/20 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments?
We're basically approving a salary of about approximately 62% for each of the coaches.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number five.
Resolved to grant permission for a non-resident faculty member's child who attended district schools in the 2019-20 school year to attend Putnam Valley High School, one child, for the 2020-2021 school year without the payment of tuition as per the request in document number 185/20 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting on file in the district office.
Second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Number six.
Resolved to grant permission for a non-resident faculty member's child who attended district schools in the 2019-20 school year to attend Putnam Valley High School, one child, for the 2020-21 school year without the payment of tuition as per the request in document number 186-20 attached to the agenda and official minutes of the meeting on file in the district office.
Second.
So for the, for the community, we talked about this a meeting or two ago about maintaining our frieze, I guess, or whatever we were calling it. Right. But these are students of faculty members that have been, were part of this wave of students or a number of students that had been in prior to, prior to the implementation of that issue. And that was back in, I guess, 2010 or 11 when we started this. So the, these students that are granted, are getting these, this benefit are carryovers from when we started this or before we started.
Thank you for that clarification. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number seven.
Resolved to authorize the Superintendent of Schools to enter into agreements effective July 1st, 2020 with the following staff members, agreements referenced in the official minutes of this meeting, Maureen Bellino, Suzie Cummings, Natalie Doherty, Jill Figarrella, Douglas Green, Michael Lee, Megan Smith Eisen, David Spittle and Agada Zuminski.
Second.
Question?
We're missing one. We're missing Jeanette Mistrada.
Okay. Maureen, are you on that?
Done it. You gotta reread it with Jeanette in there.
Wait a minute.
All right, Barbara, take two.
Resolved to authorize the Superintendent of Schools to enter into agreements effective July 1st, 2020 with the following staff members, agreements referenced in the official minutes of this meeting, Maureen Bellino, Suzie Cummings, Natalie Doherty, Jill Figarrella, Douglas Green, Michael Lee, Megan Smith Eisen, David Spittle, Agada Zuminski, Jeanette Mistrada.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Go ahead, Jeanette.
Thank you.
Not in alphabetical order, but it's okay.
That's okay.
Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. Mr. Cohen, will you read number one?
Resolved to approve agenda items two through eight as contained on the consent agenda for this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments?
We're approving CSE CP, CPSE placements. We're approving budget transfers that will cover the cost of technology equipment that will be going into the capital project and purchasing furniture for the elementary school. We're approving a change in the capital project for additional monies that might be needed to install water meters and some other materials. And we will not be removing the irrigation piping that's now existing there. We're approving a transportation agreement for one of our students who will be going to Eastchester Schools, special needs students. We're approving agreement with companies who provide services for our disability students who have special needs. And I won't leave the list of the companies. We're approving summer technology workers. We're approving fund balance transfers that'll be used for the teachers' retirements funds and for the employee benefit accrued liability fund. That's funds where teachers who are retiring have credits that they have not used or services that we have to pay for at the end. And I'd like to thank two people because we're accepting generous, generous donations of a $1,200 gift card from, oops, excuse me, I just went back, lost it, from Lynette Romanello. Give me one second, it just disappeared on me. From Lynette Romanello to provide to district families who are in need. And $10,000 for supermarket gift cards from Richard Shea, supervisor of town of Philstown, also for students, parents and families of children who need.
Excellent. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, I'd like to open it up. Maureen, if there's any comment on any topic or to anybody on the board?
I have a comment. Jeanette and I were, participated in school vote this year where we, as a board member, we watched. And I just want to thank Maureen and all the staff members that participated in the budget count. You guys did a great job. It was very efficient and effective and I was very impressed. So congratulations and well done.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I, I also wanted to thank everybody, specifically the business office and more specifically, you know, Maureen Bellino, Jeannie Denike, countless communications that she needed to send out. Maureen Pedersen for coordinating the newsletter and the postal challenges that we had, dealing with those. Of course, the community, you know, and a partnership with the, the CSEA and the teachers' union and their assistance in trying to help support the budget. And, you know, we have a lot of, we did a lot of good work, but we have a lot more to do. I just want to reiterate that, like Dr. Luft had mentioned earlier, that, you know, this is, was a challenging year for the budget and it's going to be another challenging one next year. And I do welcome public and anybody in the community who wants to talk about budget and questions that they have and, and understanding what goes into it. We would welcome that. And I can be reached at, at the business office most any day. So, thank you.
And one of the community members that brought up the original topics of social injustice thanked Dr. Luft for bringing it up tonight and he looks forward to learning more about how the process will be implemented.
Thank you for that follow-up, Maureen, excellent. So I, I just want to, this is officially our last board meeting of the, I don't even know what year we're in, 1920, 1920 school year. Our next one will be our reorganization meeting for the 2021 school year. And I just want to publicly acknowledge the work done by every single member of the school community, beginning with our students, their parents and their parents and sort of teachers, their teachers, administrators, leadership and each of you that served on the board and in the business office. We, we were standing in freefall for four months now. And the fact that learning still happened, agendas got moved along. We're still responding to such crucial issues like the racial injustice that's existing in our world today. We're not letting a little simple thing like a worldwide pandemic stop us. It may look different, but it's not going to stop us. So I just want to acknowledge, everybody should give yourselves one to two pats on the back for the work that we've done this year. And really, I want to say particularly our students, our families and our teachers. So thank you very, very much. And on that note, I'd like a motion to adjourn the last board meeting of the 2019-20 school year.
Second.
So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Happy summer, whatever it looks like. Good evening, everybody. And we'll see you for the organization meeting. Take care.
Thank you.
And everyone.
Good night.